Good evening. Welcome to the Prince George's County Board of Education for June 28, 2012. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. One of our colleagues from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education is scheduled to join us tonight in the board meeting, Ms. Tracy McGuire, is she here? There she is. Hi. And Ms. McGuire is from Calvert County, board member. At this time, Ms. Boston, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Onwood.
Present.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
President.
Ms. Higgins.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to adopt the June 28, 2000 board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Waller, thank you. Ms. Eubanks has been properly moved that we accept the, adopt the agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for June 14, 2012?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved that we approve the minutes for the board meeting of June 14, 2012. Is there any discussion, any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion passed. We'll now have a news break entitled Faith Jackson Leading By Example.
Faith Angela Imani Tamara Hope Nibechi Jackson.
It seemed fitting that Faith Jackson, a young lady with so many talents and so many prospects in life, would have so many names. At her recent graduation, the student member of the Board of Education and her school's valedictorian teared up as she shared the challenging years she and her classmates had just endured.
Many of us inherently had some speed bumps and detours on our path to this joyous day. Since starting at the MECA, we have survived the snowpocalypse of 2011, an earthquake, a hurricane, and even what some suggested to be the end of the world, and still make sure to keep the faith.
Keeping the faith, pun intended, is exactly what Faith Jackson has been doing ever since she was sworn in last August as the board's student member and its first girl in over four years.
Execute the office of student board member.
Execute the office of student board member.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
While Faith has long been an advocate for students' rights and has stayed true to that crusade throughout her term of office, her desire to be on the board, if not her qualifications for it, was a bit of a surprise to one of her biggest fans, her principal.
She has a determination that's unbelievable, and she sticks to her goals. You know, I could tell when she was a freshman that here's a girl that believes in herself, who is determined to have her dreams come true, and nothing is going to stop her. She wanted to be on the Board of Education, and I was saying Faith? You know, she is well spoken, she is confident, sometimes you have to say tender a little bit, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, when you have so much passion, sometimes you have to tender it.
Astute young lady that she is, Faith came to appreciate her principal's advice.
Before I got on this board, I'm just like, I'm changing this, 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 and that. They're not ready for me, everything's wrong. And then I get here, it's like, oh, okay, I see how this is the best solution for all parties involved, especially since this is an extremely large school system. And I mean, I'm friends with student members from other counties, and a lot of them don't have the leverage that the student member of Prince George's County has, and I really appreciate that.
Respectful of tradition, and she has dutifully smiled and shaken many hands. Faith has determinedly kept to her campaign pledge to make her peers her priority. From organizing a get out the vote campaign and appearing in a PSA to do the same, to hosting a budget form specifically for teens to increase their understanding of school system finances, to helping change what counts as high school community service hours, Faith has left little doubt about the seriousness of her purpose.
Our requirements made it so that you had to go to a tax exempt nonprofit organization to get service learning hours, and that meant that if you went to a doctor's office and you got service early, others, some schools would kind of categorize it as not that tax exempt nonprofit you needed, and you would not be able to get those hours. And so that's something that I really worked on this year and tried to get changed.
Having to work in an adult world and making adult decisions far sooner than many of her classmates begs the question, was Faith Jackson ever able to be just a regular kid?
Well, this year, the thing is that my friends and I are all nerds, so it hasn't been that much of an adjustment for me. But with this year, what I really have done is started to combine some of my activities. So instead of like, I mean, I was still able to play soccer and to do things like that, but instead of solely trying to go to social events, it may be like a study party where we all do our AP World History work.
So yes, there was fun on the soccer field and as a member of the swim team, but scholarship and duty seem to trump all.
Looking more and more.
So as she prepared to say goodbye, she heard from others praise aplenty for making those choices and for what they have earned her.
Ms. Jackson is also a recipient of both the Ron Brown Scholarship and a Gates Millennial Scholar.
Our board member, Faith Jackson, has been accepted to Harvard University.
When she gets to Harvard, she's going to make us proud. She wants to be a biomedical engineering major with a minor in international affairs. I think someday we're going to see this young lady in the White House. Faith Jackson, congratulations.
So headed to Harvard and beyond with a degree that combines her three Es, engineering, economics, and education. Faith will make a difference in this world because her fans know what she's done already and have faith that she will do even more.
I see her being very concerned about kids in other schools, and she has to go to this school, and she has to do this. So she has it in her, you know what I'm saying? And that can only grow. That can grow to another level with the experiences that she will encounter. She's going to see how she has to broaden that which she does right now. She'll see it.
Congratulations to a young lady whose first name may be Faith, but who could easily be called Hoop, for that is what she inspires in all those lucky enough to know her. For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zerrin reporting.
Congratulations to Ms. Jackson, we wish her well. Chairs report, good evening. Days before nearly 9,000 educators descended on Washington DC for the National Education Association Annual Meeting and Representative Assembly, hundreds kicked off their annual gathering by giving a deserving makeover. Future, current, and retired teachers, higher education faculty and education support professionals painted, cleaned, made repairs, and landscaped Thomas Johnson Middle School as part of Outreach to Teach. Over 400 educators traveled from around the country, some as far away as Hawaii, to help refurbish Thomas Johnson Middle Schools. Volunteers redid the school's landscaping, completely remodeled the teacher's lounge with new flooring and furniture, painted murals throughout the school, and built a new studio for the TV morning announcements. Sponsored by NEA Student Program, each year Outreach to Teach selects public schools in the metropolitan area of the host city of NEA's annual meeting to receive a free makeover. Kudos to students. Joshua Johnson, sixth grade student at Lake Arbor Elementary School, achieved perfect attendance for seven years. From kindergarten through sixth grade, Joshua Johnson of Mitchellville never missed a single day of school at Lake Arbor Elementary. Joshua was honored at a ceremony earlier this month at the school for this milestone. Two Fort Washington siblings have subsequently taken the valedictorian spot in their graduating class at Friendly High School in Fort Washington. Myron Keith Gilbert and Gabrielle Gilbert, Gibbert, have both graduated from Friendly as back-to-back valedictorians in 2011 and 2012. Gabrielle graduated from Friendly this year and will attend Hampton University in August on a full scholarship, joining her brother Keith, who currently attends Hampton and is also attending a full tuition academic scholarship. Kudos to teachers. Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School Science Department Chair Elizabeth Butler was honored this month as an outstanding science educator by the Reston, Virginia-based American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics. Ms. Butler, who teaches seventh grade science at Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School, was chosen from among 200 math and science teachers in five surrounding Maryland counties and was honored with a plaque and $250 at a banquet on June the 8th. Upcoming events, the Board of Education will be on, well, we might be on a six-week break and we may not, but generally starting from July 2nd through August the 10th until school starts back. But throughout the summer, we will be monitoring a smooth opening of schools. We will have a CIP and FAB meeting on August the 15th, 2012, at the Sasser Building at 5:00 PM. The next scheduled board meeting will be held on August the 23rd here at the Sasser Building and evening meeting at 7:05. If you're interested in speaking at a board meeting, you must call two and a half hours before that timeframe. Chair yields to Dr. Height for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, members of the board. The Excellence in Education Foundation hosted the second annual Golfing for Education Tournament yesterday at the Country Club at Woodmore. More than 100 business leaders and community partners participated in this spectacular event in support of education in Prince George's County Public Schools. I'm happy to announce that we have almost tripled our contributions this year, raising more than $150,000 for student scholarships. I would like to thank everyone again who helped make this event a success. These funds will be used to provide scholarships and to support education-related programs in our district. While many of us were at the golf tournament, more than 400 educators from around the country, including current, future, and retired teachers, higher education faculty, and education support professionals, spent the entire day giving back at Thomas Johnson Middle School. Each year, the National Education Association's Outreach to Teach program selects a public school to receive a makeover that includes painting, cleaning, repairing, and landscaping. I'm excited that one of our schools was selected this year, and no, this will be a wonderful way to welcome back students and staff in the fall. Our teachers and students deserve to teach and learn in a beautiful environment. Yesterday evening, the Maryland State Department of Education recognized 26 of our schools for their dedication and implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports this school year. This is a school-wide program that focuses on positive behavior expectations for every student. I'm pleased to announce that Baden Elementary School has achieved a 2012 Silver National Recognition Award from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. Baden Elementary joins other schools in our district that have encouraged students to practice healthier lifestyles. As we prepare for a new school year, I would like to encourage our families to attend our annual Back to School Fair that will be held on Saturday, August 18th, at the Showplace Arena in Upper Marlboro from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is a community-wide event where parents and students will have access to the resources needed for a successful school year. And finally, I'd like to conclude my remarks by congratulating Faith Jackson and wishing you the best at Harvard University. Madam Chair, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Superintendent Height. I yield to Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, all. I just wanted to take this opportunity to speak about my time on the board like it has been done by student members in the past and kind of commemorate those who've been helpful to me. I would like to just start by saying thank you to members who offered to chaperon me or take me to meetings, God, my mother, and family and friends who unfortunately are not here today, here yet, but I was told I can't push it back yet. Faculty, staff, and my retiring principal, Mrs. Alina Nobles Jones at Charles Herd Flowers High School, the Mecca of Excellence, supporters elsewhere in the system, and finally the students who elected and entrusted me to be their voice. With that said, I must say that my time on the board has been enlightening, eye-opening, and unfortunately very disheartening. There is a concentrated effort to mute the voice of the youth. I eagerly took office, ready to inform, initiate change, and help keep the faith, but found a board with members well aware of our problems and needed solutions, but who were willfully inhibited and muzzled by bureaucracy, politics, and superfluous endeavors. As a student member, I had the unique opportunity of visiting among 40 different schools across the system during my one-year term and of encountering students, faculty, and staff who, A, did not know who I was or the role of the student member, or B, were not too concerned with who I was or the role of the student member, considering the student member's youth and lack of full voting rights. Interestingly enough, this proved beneficial and that people were not afraid to talk to me and tell me the truth, and I subsequently was able to get a realistic view of our system that you cannot get when you only show up in the community with a camera behind you or when you create an environment in which people fear retribution. I learned, I learned what is really going on and found that we have great people within our system, but need leadership dedication and focus on this Board of Education that mirrors that of our employees. Over the course of this year, the adversity I faced at the hands of members on this board has caused me to improperly question my faith in the system and to grow weak in representing the over 120,000 students I sit here on behalf of. I lost sight of my responsibilities and chose to remain relatively quiet, but now realize that in the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." The students matter. The education matters. The community matters. The self-serving ulterior motors, however, do not. The role of the student member has been illegally threatened by my colleagues on this board, and it is quite alarming to see how those quick to utter the phrase "children come first" are easily as quick to acquiesce to political pressure and corruption, both of which are almost always antithetical to the best interests of those very children. This year, particular members on this year's Board of Education chose to blatantly ignore the real issues while remaining steadfast in their ardent and arbitrary opposition to proposals patently beneficial to the students in the county. These proposals initiated by myself and students I represent included a locker cleanout/school supply drive for the students within our district, efforts to send some of our student leaders and advocates to our leadership camp, and the continuation of the passing of the torch ceremony previously held for the incoming student member of the board. Leadership on this board frivolously focused time and efforts on preventing many pursuits similar to the forementioned solely because of personal agendas. Prince George's County Public Schools will not advance from second from the bottom until my colleagues either remove the politics or remove themselves. You do not run to become a member on a board of education because it is a way to start your political career or because it is a part-time job that gives you some power. You run because of your commitment to children, education, and our greater community. Unfortunately, I have rarely seen examples of this commitment by this board, but nevertheless know that our dynamic student member of the board elect, Ms. Shabnam Ahmed, will bring the focus and dedication needed and will tirelessly work to surmount the obstacle this boards, the obstacles this board has already began placing in her path ignorantly because of who she is related to. By illegally voting to oppress Ms. Ahmed before she could even take office, my colleagues have effectively said that the students who she will represent, products of our own decisions, policies, and overall education system, are neither knowledgeable nor worthy enough for a voice. And all I can say to myself and others in attempts to fathom these illogical, illegal, and political actions is forgive them for they know not what they do. Ms. Ahmed will certainly restore the faith and will do amazing things while working closely with the Prince George's Regional Association of Student Governments, or PEGAS, and our dedicated advisor and supervisor of Safe and Drug Free Schools, Mr. Richard Moody. And while I was informed by leadership on this board that I could not commemorate Ms. Ahmed because political agendas trump outstanding achievement, I did not make it on this board by taking no for an answer, and I'll present both her and Mr. Moody, neither of whom were aware of this, with plaques as mere tokens of appreciation following this meeting, whether here or at another venue. And just example of the plaques, this one's the one from Mr. Moody, and this one will be the tradition for the student member just to keep up the legacy, and I will present those to them later. I hope that what is said today awakens those in charge of the second-largest school system in the state ranked number one out of the entire country for education, and that leadership and members on this board decide to break the political cycle of inferiority for, as once stated by Einstein, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again expecting different results." And we, my colleagues, have gone insane and have failed our students. I say this all not because I have a vengeance or enjoy burning bridges, but because I care about the system, I was educated in my entire school life, and would think that those here on this Board of Education would as well. My goal here tonight is to not, is not to insult or antagonize my colleagues, because at the end of the day, it is not about them, it is about the children. The children who are and will continue to be greatly impacted by our actions or lack thereof. Unfortunately, no, I'm sorry, ultimately, on this 20th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2012, I would like to conclude by urging my soon-to-be former colleagues on the Prince George's County Board of Education to search within themselves to find the reason why they sit on the board, realize their duties to the hundreds of thousands of people we serve, and to take the politics out of education and put the student voice back in. Thank you, and God bless.
At this time, Dr. Height, I yield to you for introduction of discussion items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item under discussion is the items under 5.1. This is federal legislation, and these are the federal legislative implications and the federal legislative implications specifically to Head Start, Title I, Title II, and Special So I want to make sure that the board is aware, as previously stated, there are no major changes in our federal programs except if Congress doesn't pass the budget. A sequestration order will go into effect on January 2nd, 2013, mandating across-the-board cuts for all federal programs. We are anticipating a 9% to 10% cut across federal programs if this occurs. We've tried to budget where possible in anticipation of the cut. It's likely that we will be okay in Head Start, Titles I and II, but Special Ed will have a large impact since much of their budget is in salaries. The rough estimates if the federal cuts go through in January are as follows. Title I, 2.9 million. Title II, 490,000. Title III, 270,000. Perkins, 110,000. And Special Ed, 2.5 million. So I wanted to provide this information to the Board of Education per the request of Board Member Rosalynn Johnson at the previous board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, any questions regarding that report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Item 6.1, Head Start Report, and I believe that is going to be done by Board Member Rosalynn Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Johnson is the board's representative for Head Start, and here's our update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Height, you clearly finished with what I was going to start with, and that was about the danger of sequestration. While at this moment, other than just calling your congressman, you know, they've been doing that, we've been doing that, but sequestration could have a devastating effect. But because the superintendent, and which is the next point of this, Prince George's County is noted in the state and in the country for running one of the best, if not the best, Head Start program. Not only does it meet the minimum standard of Head Start as it was designed, but it has exceeded. Our children who go through the Head Start program come out of that program ready for kindergarten at very high levels of readiness for performance. I would like for Laura Barbie Matthews, where is she, if she would stand? She is the director of that program. Prior, prior to Ms. Barbie, from the inception of Head Start, we have had an erratic type of performance. Ms. Barbie, in her tenure, all of those issues have been resolved, and our children are doing phenomenally well. I would like for you all to know, most Head Start programs in the country are not embedded in school systems. They are run through private entities, and when you go to the state meeting and you see the individuals who are running Head Start programs for these vulnerable three-year-old children, it makes you shudder. I cannot but tell you the pain that I felt when I see who is helping those little ones to become successful schoolchildren, but not in Prince George's. And to Dr. Height's credit, I will tell you, he has made Head Start not only accountable, but he has embedded it into the system. You cannot tell the difference between Head Start and our kindergarten program. And so to our superintendent, I say thank you on behalf of Head Start, the Board of Education. Our little ones are doing phenomenally well. And so while you have a report on your desk, I'm not going through it, but Head Start is solvent. The report you have runs through June, even though their fiscal year with their last reporting is July, I can assure you the money has been well spent. And even though it is a federal program, there are additions that Prince George's Public Schools adds, and so our Head Start program is the finest in the state and one of the finest, if not the finest, in the country. And so as the liaison for two years to Head Start, I wish to report to you that you need to be proud of Head Start. It is wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Colleagues, any questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just as Ms. Johnson, who serves as the board liaison to Head Start, provided a report on Head Start, Item 6.02, Disabilities Issue Advisory Board Annual Report, understand that Ms. Hathaway Beck, board member who serves as the liaison to the Disabilities Issue Advisory Board, will provide an overview of the DAB annual report as well.
Thank you, Dr. Height. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing two members of the Disability Issues Advisory Board, Ms. Marie Crabbe, who has been with us since the beginning of what we refer to as DAB, and Mr. Dominique Flowers, who joined us a few years ago. And as we know, DAB is a committee comprised of our community members, and so it has been a distinct pleasure to be able to work with our community on issues of compliance with ADA. And I would also like to thank our current chair, Mike McLaughlin, who assisted with the presentation of this report. And I'll turn it over to Marie and Dominique.
Just a button right on the, on the mic.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Height, staff, and audience members. My name's Dominique Flowers, this is my colleague Marie Crabbe, and we'll be giving tonight's Disability Issues Advisory Report. I think we have a slideshow, if we can get that up now. I think we have a slide show, if we can get that up now. Okay, well, we'll just keep going. And I'd like to start off by assuring you that we've made progress, and I guess we might have, that's fine, we'll just go with what we have. I'd like to start by saying we've made lots of progress this year, one of which is providing support to 38 employees with disabilities and ensuring in reasonable combinations were met. Now, keep in mind that these employees didn't only include long-term disabilities, but also employees with short-term disabilities, such as a fractured leg or what have you. Some of the schools that we've been to this year that we've conducted onsite school visits include James Reiler Randall Elementary School, Stephen DeCater Middle School, Parkdale High School, and Bowie High School. And these schools were chosen based on community needs and also recommendations from the Department of Special Education based on student needs. And in visiting these sites, we kept to mind our goal, which is to make recommendations to implement and improve accessibility. And keep this in mind, we're just not making upgrades. We are actually changing learning environments and making them more inclusive for our students when they go visit these schools. And we can't take other credit, we've collaborated with the Office of Planning, Agricultural Services, the Department of Building Services, and the Office of Physical Therapy to make these recommendations. We have a long list, I'm not going to name all of them for sake of time, but we've made lots of improvements. We've, in examples, installing automatic door openers, converting group and adult bathrooms to comply with ADA requirements, constructing a new curb cuts, providing directional signage, so basically signs that point to where handicap parking is located. And I can assume that the students are taking note of this. You know, we've been to some schools where the entrance is here and there's no handicap ramp, and the handicap ramp is located in some unreasonable place, and so we made a change and have it right in front of the main entrance of the building for more accessibility. Let's see. So we had pictures, unfortunately, we don't have them up, but we do have the pictures up on our site, which is located on the school boards for Prince George's County Public Schools website, so you can go there to view some of the pictures. But some of the pictures I was going to show you are orthopedic restroom upgrades that we made to Friendly High School. Let's see, we've also gone to Thurgood Marshall High School, or Middle School, and made ADA upgrades as well. And basically, when we go to these schools, it's a very cordial interaction. We go, the principal comes, he gives us a tour of the infrastructure, and we have an opportunity to inspect the facilities. And we try to go during the day when the students are there so that we can interact and observe them and interact with them on certain occasions. So forgive me for going from here, but we had a lot of information. We're especially proud of our evac treks. In case you don't know, the evac treks are basically large chairs that are set up at schools to provide emergency transportation in case there's an emergency and the school has two wings, and so we need to transport incapacitated individual down from one flight of stairs down to the ground. And we also have chair lifts as well as stair climbers. And in total, our expenditure in all the upgrades was approximately $1 million, and if you happen to take a look at all the upgrades you made, the only word that can come to your mind is progress. We've made progress. This is not lip service. We go, we make the recommendations, and almost immediately, someone comes to school and we get these upgrades done, and I think the schools are really appreciative of it. At this time, I'd like to turn over to my colleague, who will continue with the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Marie Crabbe. It's been a pleasure to serve on the DAB Board in conjunction with Prince George's County Board of Education. One of the issues I'd like, one of the items I'd like to point out is the ADA website, which contains some of the information that Dominique just mentioned. You can look at pictures. We had a wonderful slide with interesting pictures, so you can actually get a visual of the upgrades that we've made throughout the county. Necessary upgrades for our students as well as our visitors, our faculty, and our staff. The compliance officer, who's a, this position is a newly created position in the last couple of years, is Elizabeth Davis. Her name has become synonymous with ADA and improvements throughout the county. She is one of the people responsible for updating the ADA website to include the pictures as they become available. DAB also is out in the community, and one of the ways that we are working with the community is through our meetings, which are open to the public, having the website, maintaining the website, making sure there are reasonable accommodations that meet the standards for ADA, for our facilities, for our guests. Oh, great. All right. Right now, I'm speaking on the community awareness, and one of the areas that we've touched upon is this, this year, Parkdale High School held their second annual Disability Awareness Day Program. Acronym is DAP. Three members from DAB attended. We had Helen Ballard, Ola Ojuwami, and Marcy Canavan. She was our formal chair. I'd like to especially recognize Principal Cheryl Logan and Ms. Shane Swift, who is a teacher at Parkdale. Because of their tenacity and their dedication, DAP has become a success, and we look forward to the community's input. Legislatively, DAB has worked with Dr. Height on the UDL Task Force. UDL stands for Universally Design, Universal Design for Learning. Where ADA compliance meets the physical needs and accommodation, UDL's attempt is to make the learning environment universal for people with special needs, because it's one thing to meet the physical needs, but you can't do that without teaching people where they are and the various positions they are. So as UDL has made some cognitive advances, and the, I'd like to continue that, you know, excuse me. In policy, one of the recommendations we have asked is that the Board take a look at a resolution and revise it that we initially brought to the Board, and that is to look at the staff and also the members of DAB, and try to get us more members and more leadership. Here you have a list of our membership, and Donna Hathaway Beck is our liaison to the Board. And I would like to also conclude with letting you know that we're here, we're being recognized throughout the county, we're committed, we appreciate our collaboration with the Board of Education, and the compliance officer, and the partnership that we have with the county. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you both for your work on this, on the advisory board. It's been quite a success. We think that the system has really jumped leaps and bounds, quite frankly, with the work that you've been able to do, and we thank Dr. Height for recommending to the Board many of the recommendations that you all have made. Colleagues, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Ms. Jacobs?
If I could just take a moment to recognize Elizabeth Davis, the compliance officer who has worked with the Board, and to thank the Board for all of its work with Ms. Davis. She is a jack-of-all-trades and does a lot of other things in the system, but she always makes this a priority and really is personally committed to it, so I want to thank her publicly.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for that report. The next item, Item 7.0, this is a consent agenda item, 7.1. This is an amendment to a section of the superintendent's employment contract dealing with timelines for evaluation.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, a motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is under Budget Consent, 8.0, and we are submitting for approval the Educational Facilities Master Plan. That was discussed during the CIP meeting last week.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Height, one of the things in this particular master plan I was very appreciative of is that you have an errata sheet that allows us to see very quickly what are the differences from one year to the other. I would like to bring to your attention, we have several projects that are going to be going forward throughout our school system, having to do with parking lot upgrades, and they are causing some angst about tree removal. I would ask of you, please, if we could have a review of every one of our school facilities, first by the building supervisor, is there any change at the school related to playgrounds or gardens or anything that may, at some point, impact if we have to do any work there? The reason is, the issues that are arising is because many things have been added to our property, and they have become personal to those at the building or in the community, but they did not go through Supporting Services approval. And because of that, we don't know that they're there. We just go there, we do our planning, and then boops, there it is. So if we could have some heads up to areas that have had some new configurations, particularly around greenery, that would help us to mitigate some of the angst and anger that people are registering with us over this. It doesn't mean we stop our work, but at least we can do that work and do the design knowing what we're going to face. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second that we accept the Educational Master Plan, Facilities Plan. Any other discussion? All in favor? Objections, abstentions? Seeing none, a motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That brings us to Items under 10.0, Governance Unfinished Business. These are items for second reader. The first item is 10.1, a resolution naming of the Music Wing at Thomas G. Pullen, Performing Arts Academy, the Catherine A. Rodifer Music Wing. Board approval is requested.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Is there a motion? So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and second that we approve the resolution naming of the Music Wing at Thomas G. Pullen, CPA Academy, the Catherine A. Rodifer Music Wing. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Objections? Okay, is the family here? I know. Go ahead, stand up. Thank you for all your work. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Catherine, for your work as well. Thank you. The next item, Madam Chair, is Item 10.02, FY13 Tax-Exempt Municipal Lease Purchase, Financing for the Procurement of Instructional Computers. I'm going to ask Mr. Stansky to provide an explanation.
This is a standard practice each year when we're purchasing certain items. Usually it's three, usually we'll use textbooks, buses, and computers or instructional technology, and we do it through a lease financing over a five-year period, and it is, the payments are built into the budget and requesting Board approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. It's been properly moved and second that we approve this item as presented by Superintendent Height and Mr. Stansky. Any discussion? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Objections, abstentions? So moved. So approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item, Item 10.03, Reconciliation and Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2013 Annual Operating Budget. This was also discussed at length at our last Finance and Budget Meeting, and I'm going to ask Mr. Stansky once again to provide an explanation prior to submitting it to the Board for approval.
This is, again, a process that Board goes through every year. Once the county council approves a budget, it comes back to the Board for reconciliation. As Dr. Height indicated, we did discuss on June 20th the contents of that reconciliation. We are requesting just a 1.1% transfer in between major categories. Everything that was funded and asked for by the Board in the February adoption is included in this reconciliation, and certainly will be happy to answer any additional questions Board members may have, but request approval at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Stansky, with regard to the section under electronic payables, the payable solutions, that kind of thing, we now will be able to have requisitions online, they can be just electronically transmitted, and then, once they're accepted, and all payments. So all of this is all tied together, because we were still, unfortunately, until recently, using paper. And one of the things, it slows down the process, particularly when you need to have the multiple signatures and the eight-part pieces. So is all of this now tied together, and we are electronic with regard to purchase order, request for this, that, or the other, that is going to need a payment, a voucher, et cetera?
So, Ms. Johnson, the electronic payable solution is the next agenda item. I can certainly wait till that agenda item to address all that.
Because they're listed kind of together. When you open it up, they're all there, and that's why I asked the question.
Okay, not a problem.
Fine, then I'm going to wait for you to talk about those. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and second that we accept the items as presented by Mr. Stansky and Dr. Height. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Objections, abstentions? Motion pass. Next item?
Now, the next item is 10.04, FY13 Electronic Payable Solution. Ms. Johnson, I think this is the item to which you were referring, and Mr. Stansky will also provide an explanation for this item.
So to clarify, Ms. Johnson, we already have an electronic purchase order system. So what we're now embarking on is how we actually pay vendors. So right now, we still pay them through hard checks. We are now going to offer an option to vendors to actually get paid with essentially a credit card. And so the way it works is, obviously, the bank charges a fee to the vendor, and then we, for every vendor we sign up through this payable method, we get a rebate from the bank of 1.5% of the total value of the invoice. So the advantage, obviously, to the vendors, they get paid much quicker than a, from a hard check. So right now, when accounts payable gets an invoice, we review it for sufficiency, and then a check is cut and has to be mailed to the vendor or picked up, whereas now, through this process, a vendor can be paid through a credit card, essentially, and get, obviously get their payment a lot quicker than they do now. So for all parties around, it's an advantage. We're going to start it as a volunteer system, meaning that vendors can voluntarily sign up, and we'll see what kind of participation we get. But we think it's an exciting new way to get vendors paid in a much timelier way, and then also sort of, you know, get additional funds into the school system.
That was what I wanted to hear. We have now closed all of the circle. We had a piece here, and so now we just have one, because I will tell you, when you have to wait to go from the purchase order at the school, wanting this, that, or the other, then the approval process, then the separating it out, it is laborious, and it requires a lot of time, and because by the time we get to the last place, the last page is unreadable, depending upon how hard you, so this is absolutely needed. It saves us money, and it should cut down on the numbers of errors and callbacks to, what did you say you wanted? So, thank you.
Ms. Beck?
Mr. Stansky, do we have a system where individuals who rent our buildings can pay electronically? So that, what I'm talking about are like churches who rent our schools, and then, and in some cases, don't pay? And how do we deal with the lack of payment for organizations that repeatedly rent and then are behind in their facility expenses?
Right, so we don't, right now, offer electronic payment for facility rental. It's actually a very good suggestion. We've started that with before and after care. We're actually looking to do it for summer school for next year, and actually, you know, hadn't thought about facility rental, and that might be a good option as well. Sir Miles, I'll have to, I don't know the frequency of organizations that are behind or don't, are not paying for the facility rental. I don't know if you have any information?
Well, when organizations don't pay, we send them a letter, and we continue to follow up until they do pay. I don't have the actual information on what the timeline, so to speak, for those organizations, or the number of organizations that are behind, but we can certainly work on that and get that to you.
I don't want to take all the credit for this. This was an email all of us received from SEIU that this would be a great suggestion to ensure that the fees are paid, because we are, in turn, providing custodians, and so we have a cost associated with it, and I think an electronic payable is probably a great idea. Thank you.
Colleagues, is there a motion? Move to accept. Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item 10.05, Board Policy 0105. This is the policy Parent Involvement in Schools. Board approval is requested of the item, which is a parent, family, and community involvement policy. This policy commits the Board and administration to collaborating with parents and members of the community as participants in school governance. This policy was discussed extensively in the Policy Committee of a whole meeting and now is submitted to the Board for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept this policy, Board Policy 0105, Parent Involvement in Schools. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Objections or abstentions? Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is 10.06. This is Board Policy 6161.6, Physical Education Uniforms. We're requesting Board approval of the item, which is a physical education uniform policy. This policy provides guidelines for appropriate attire for physical education. This policy is also a recommendation out of the Policy Committee Meeting and was discussed extensively during that process.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Jackson?
I just want to say that I'm really excited to see this policy pass, because as a former student, I've had to deal with the struggle of going from school to school and having to buy new gym uniforms, so I'm excited to see that we're trying to come up with a standard so families no longer have to bear that financial burden and applaud and thank you for going ahead and doing that.
Ms. Beck?
Move to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept this Board policy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Objections or abstentions? Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Items Under New Business. These are items submitted as first readers. The item 11.1, Capital Improvement Program for Funding Years 2014, 2019, and this item is before the Board as a first reader, and inasmuch as that is the case, there is no discussion required at this time.
Thank you. Colleagues, is there a motion for approval of these as first readers? So moved. It's been properly moved and seconded, after the vote. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept this item as first reader. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections or abstentions? Seeing none. Ms. Burrows?
I just wanted to really thank the CIP Office once again for your work in ensuring that the southern part of the county receives our fair share. For too long in the county, there's been a disparity in education dollars when it comes to new school construction and renovations. I believe that this Board and this Superintendent, along with the CIP Office, has worked hard to ensure that citizens down in South County finally start to receive what we've always deserved. So I just wanted to, once again, say thank you for that, and I look forward to you continuing that work.
Okay. That brings us...
Okay. And, Madam Chair, I'd like to just amend, for the record, some comments I made during the Superintendent's Report. Talked about the 400 educators from around the country, including current, future, and retired teachers, higher education faculty, and education support professionals that spent the entire day at Thomas Johnson during the National Education Association's Outreach to Teach program, and we are happy that they selected a school in Prince George's County, because originally they were headed to Montgomery County, but because of the work of PGCEA, decided to redirect all of that energy and actions to our school system. So we're thrilled and want to thank PGCEA for their intervention in getting NEA into our system, and in particular, into Thomas Johnson Middle School. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Height.
So, Madam Chair, that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, colleagues, we have three registered speakers, I believe, for a public comment on non-agenda items. For our registered speakers, you have three minutes to speak on the comment for which, excuse me, on the topic for which you have been registered. You may not relinquish your time to a registered or unregistered speaker. At the sound of the buzzer, we ask that you complete the sentence that you're on, and you may not relinquish your time. As I said, you're encouraged to use titles rather than names, and your adherence will ensure a smooth public comment. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Young.
I didn't hear the buzzer. Oh, okay. My name is Donna Young. I have a child at Bowie High School. My son transferred from a private school in which he had come from Prince George's County previously. He had an IEP, which I brought in on day one. His IEP was not implemented as required under the regulations, which says that the IEP should be adopted if a child transfers from a state, the regulation indicates that that IEP transfers until the new one is adopted. This was not done, and therefore, his services in his math class were not implemented, and my son did not do very well in math. The IP team met. They have indicated clearly in his IEP that he needs additional services. I wanted to enroll my child in summer school and was told that I cannot get any supports for him in the summer school, and he is an Asperger's child who requires an aid. I do not understand, when the regulation for IDEA clearly states that under 334 related services are to be included for a child with an IEP. It also states that the related service means transportation and any such developmental corrective and supportive services as required to assist a child with a disability. It also states that the related services are not just for, the further states that longstanding interpretation of this list is not exhaustive, and that IDEA in Regulation Part B is to provide corrective support services in any classroom setting. Okay. I don't understand, if my child is being given monies to provide, be provided services, why he cannot receive those services in summer school if, in fact, he is in need of those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. David Kahn?
I'm aware, Dr. Arbogast is already aware, Ms. Johnson.
I'm sorry, do you need me to wait for Dr. Arbogast to say something? Probably nobody in this county has been a greater advocate for our elected Board than I have, and I've never been as ashamed of this elected Board as I was at the Policy Committee Meeting earlier this month. The way in which members spoke to the student member and spoke about the incoming student member was shameful, it was patronizing, and was embarrassing, very frankly. Those who acted in that way, you know who you are, it's not every member of the Board, but something needs to change. Before going into several things that came up at that meeting, I want to focus on one. The student member, according to law, is elected for a term of one year, beginning on the last day of the school year. It was announced at that meeting that the last day of that school year is June 30th, Saturday. It was also mentioned at that meeting, however, that you are not going to allow the student member to take office until your meeting in late August, thus making her term 10 months and one week. That is illegal. She is entitled to serve the full year. Find a way to get her sworn in on Saturday, and you can have a ceremonial swearing in in August, but she's elected for a term of one year, and it's up to you to make that happen. A couple of other things. The illegal attempt to lock the student member out of an executive session during which topics would be discussed that she had the right to discuss, vote on, make motions on, and whatnot, was also reprehensible. The student member's greatest sin seems to be that she tends not to vote with the majority. At the Policy Committee Meeting, there was also talk about not letting the new student member speak or make motions on anything on which she cannot vote, which is not in the law. Her sin seems to be that her sister is running for the Board of Education against the current chair of the Board. Horrible sin, and that's been mentioned earlier. There seems to be a feeling, besides all this, that young people have no business participating in policy formulation, and people are complaining, oh, my gosh, we might even have four people under 21 if every one of the young people gets elected, plus the student member and the continuing member. Well, I got to say something to the Board. They couldn't do any worse. And I would hope that the Board would remove this shame and this stain by treating the Board, the student Board member, as a full colleague, and with respect, and what the law requires and what she deserves. Thank you very much.
Kevin Broach?
My name is Kevin Salcedo Broach, and I am a graduate of the Prince George's County Public School System from Charles Herbert Flowers High School. I am here tonight to express my support for both the outgoing and incoming student members of the Board, and to share my experience as a student at the University of Virginia. On June 10th of this year, our Board of Visitors announced the firing of our President Teresa Sullivan. Without consulting the community, and in a process that was both covert and dishonest, our Board attempted to make a big decision that would affect the lives of everyone in the university community, especially that of the students. Within 16 days, the university erupted into protests, and the community demanded the return of President Sullivan, who was reinstated just this Tuesday. The Board had tried to make big decisions without the support or consent of the university community, and not only did they fail, but they tarnished the reputation of the Board and of the university as a whole. Coincidentally, I see many of the same problems here in Prince George's County, but on a much grander scale. I see a Board, one whose decisions affect the lives of many within the community, ignoring the voices of the students whom they serve, and thus affecting change which only worsens our situation, and thus tarnishes not only the Board, but the entire community itself. Prince George's County is in crisis. Our educational system has been failing our students for years, to such a magnitude that it entirely threatens anyone who graduates from one of our high schools for a generation or more. Many students and parents across this county, from Hyattsville to Oxon Hill, would agree with me when I insist that our system has failed us. Why is it, for example, that even when our students are admitted to the best universities in this country, which unfortunately is pretty rare, they struggle with competing against students from right across the county border in Montgomery, Howard, and Anarondale County? Why is it that the state of Maryland can win awards for education when our county schools can't even send our kids to college? And don't blame it on the kids, don't blame it on the teachers, and don't blame it on the parents, because any logical person, especially after having been in the system for 10 years, would conclude that it is the system that has failed, and it is the Board of Education that runs that system. So while we're struggling with giving our kids an education and keeping ourselves competitive with the rest of the world, the Board of Education is doing ridiculous things like forcing the student member out of executive sessions that she is by law allowed to attend, and stripping her of her voting privileges? When our ship is sinking, where do you find the time to silence the voice of those most invested in this system? It's a desperate move to take away the rights of students whom our system is designed to serve. Our student members perform a vital role in ensuring that the students, the ones benefiting from this education, are participating in how their lives are being run. Please don't take away her voice. Thank you.
Colleagues, that concludes our public comment list for non-agenda items. Are there any follow-up items from the June 14, 2012 meeting? Seeing none? Ms. Jackson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say to all my colleagues that as we end this school year's term with what has been yet another challenging year, I really wish to thank all of my colleagues for the hard work, dedication, and attention to the law shown on behalf of students in our county. And also, Ms. Jacobs, to you for your stellar and tireless leadership on behalf of our students. Thank you.
Colleagues, as we go into recess, not quite yet, we have to go back to executive session, so we can reconvene there, please. Thank you. No, I don't think so. Let me just make sure. Motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Waller. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting, and we are reconvening in executive session.